The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trupe, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Griffin, Alderwoman Schmidt, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Griffin, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Cruzen. Twenty-sixth present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Jeff Perry from Saint Louis Family Church. And you probably remember Pastor Perry from his very simple message on the commercials when he reminds all of us that Jesus loves us. Pastor Perry?
Thanks, President Reed. Good morning, everybody. First off, we need to acknowledge the sad loss of Officer Daryl Hall and right now his service is going on. We need to just have a moment of silence and just lift up his family in prayer. Father, we're grateful for those that step up to serve and protect, and we're sad when we see one fallen. We ask that you would comfort those that are connected to him in the force, the brotherhood and the sisterhood of those who serve us, and also the family. We pray that you would just cover all these things and bring comfort. In Jesus' name. I've been asked to do the invocation, so I'm gonna just continue with a prayer for all of you guys. Father, thank you for those who come to give their efforts and their skills and their educations to make a meaningful difference in our city. We do appreciate living in such a beautiful place. We pray for those who have suffered recently with tornadoes and difficult weather. I pray that in the city, the suburbs, and the rural areas of our region, there would be a cohesion, a graciousness, that flavor that you've imparted in the Midwest where we try to care for each other. I pray that you deliver us from apathy, complacency, and assuming somebody else will do things when we are actually the ones called to step up. I'm grateful for these who've come today, made roll call, who are here to work for the people and push things forward. I pray wisdom and blessing in commerce and trade. I pray this would be a good place to live. I pray Saint Louis would be a bright spot on the North American continent. And I just ask for your blessing upon this day. In Jesus' name.
Spin with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, I move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, seconded by the Alderwoman of the fifteenth. Alderman from the second, would you like to approach that? Then Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Madam Clerk, I want to read as we start.
Whereas Saint Louis Family Church was founded in 1988 and is now a diverse congregation of more than 3,000 people from all ages and walks of life. And whereas Saint Louis Family Church was born in the heart of founding pastor Jeff C. Perry when he was living in the Chesterfield area in 1977. Eleven years later, he completed Bible school, served as a missionary, and worked faithfully in the ministry. Pastor Jeff and his wife Patsy held Family Church's first service in June 1988 with 128 people. And whereas, for the next few years, they moved to new locations as they outgrew old ones, meeting every Friday night and eventually adding a Sunday morning service. Finally, in the spring of 1993, Saint Louis Family Church moved to their own building, and whereas, just a few months later, they were evicted by the great flood of 1993 when the Missouri River submerged Chesterfield Valley in more than nine feet of water. Undaunted, they strapped on their boots and gloves, grabbed some shovels, and started to clean up. In the spring of 1994, they reclaimed the land and buildings God had given them, more determined than ever to reach their generation. And whereas, Service International teamed up with Saint Louis Family Church to distribute groceries to families in Saint Louis for the annual Love the Neighborhood Build a Bag in December 2010. Nearly 500 volunteers braved the cold weather to hand-deliver nearly 3,000 bags filled with all the makings for a delicious Christmas dinner. In all, it was enough food to feed more than 14,000 people. The volunteers gave out $79,000 worth of diapers and baby supplies. And whereas, on August the seventh, 2010, Service International partners with Saint Louis Family Church for an exciting and memorable day for the people of the Twenty-seventh Ward and the Second Ward. Nearly 6,000 people attended the Summer Love the Neighborhood event. The event has been held since 2009. 700 volunteers worked hard to give a special day to their Saint Louis neighbors. 14,000 families were served. Dental volunteers saw 373 children and gave $28,000 in free dental care. About 3,500 children received shoes and back-to-school backpacks filled with supplies, and 9,800 pieces and sets of clothes were distributed. Now therefore bid resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Saint Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize the many contributions of Pastor Jeff C. Perry to the City of Saint Louis and wish him continued accomplishments, success, and achievements. And we direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the 29th, day of April 2011, by Honorable Dionne Flowers, Alderwoman Second Ward, Alderman Gregory Carter, Alderman Twenty-seventh Ward.
Thank you. Father, God forgive me because we tricked the pastor. He's a little, he didn't know we were doing this, so he didn't expect it. And we kinda had to trick him because Pastor Jeff is not a person that likes to be recognized or any, you know, special thing done for him. He likes to move like his commercial, just tell you about Jesus and his message, and then do and act upon what he receives from Jesus. It has been my honor and privilege and our residents to have Saint Louis Family Church adopt us through, working through Riverview West Florissant, and some of our own volunteers. But when we do these events, the number of people that come from the church to our community to do the things that they do, when you see those lime green shirts and those blue shirts and those orange shirts, you know they're there to do and work and do business. Their trucks with Service International all over the neighborhood, and they help our residents, whether they're victims of flooding or just doing projects in their homes they couldn't afford for absolutely free. And I just, I know I've talked to you Pastor Jeff many times and I thanked you, but this is the highest honor that we can do with the Board of Aldermen to thank you. And I wanted our residents to see, even though he's got commercials, that this is the man that does what they do for our community. And I wanted you all to personally, because I know when we make those announcements, I know you get jealous sometimes, so just want you to know, we know some good people, so thank you Pastor Jeff.
Yes.
Good morning. I also wanna make the comments, Family Church and the Twenty-seventh Ward met back in 1998, so we've had a very long relationship. They had some young constituents come out, about 25 every day at Dwight Davis Park servicing our children. The Recreation Department, City of Saint Louis, you know, we're always short of employees or we're always short of funds. This guy came to my office one day and asked if he could volunteer, you know, to my amazement, I didn't turn it down. I said, absolutely. So when I thought this guy meant volunteer, I thought maybe one, two days. They did it for nine years. Every summer, they had activities, they had games, food, morning and afternoon. They really committed to the community, and when the Katrina hit, they changed some commitment. And Dionne and I, we thought it was important that we maintain the relationship, and we thought it would be something maybe one time, but Pastor Jeff, Family Church, and Service International has been there, like Dionne said, for the children, for the community, every year since 2009. And Pastor Virgil as well, we wanna thank both of you guys, but we also wanna thank those volunteers. We get anywhere from 500 to 900 volunteers every commitment of each event. That's a lot of people, a lot of people. So on behalf of the Twenty-seventh and the Second of the City of Saint Louis and this Board of Aldermen, we wanna honor you. I know we tricked you down here, but like Dionne said, you do not like recognition, but that quiet guy on the commercial, a lot of my constituents said he's the hippie preacher. And so they recognize him, you know, very, very mild-mannered individual, but Pastor, thank you so much. You and Pastor Virgil.
I also wanna just send out my thanks and congratulations for a job well done. Pastor Jeff, you ever have an opportunity to talk to him? It's just like what you see on the commercials. He is truly a humble man that really, really is working to serve the Lord and serve the people of the City of Saint Louis and the people of this nation. And I tell you, I think Saint Louis is lucky and he is a local We, I'm gonna ask that this resolution be passed in bank honor, and taken on that motion, seconded by virtually everybody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. And Pastor Jeff, as the Alderwoman from the second said, this resolution is the highest honor that this board has to give. And what it does is that it forever will bind your name in the permanent archives of this city. So 100, 200 years from now, people will know that you've passed this way and that you had a significant contribution to the fabric of our community. We can't thank you and Pastor Daryl enough for the work that you guys continue to do within our community.
Well, you did an excellent job of tricking me, you guys. Thank you on behalf of, as Alderman Carter pointed out, the hundreds of volunteers that really do care, like you guys, you know, there's something inherent in your position in life where you, you know, you stepped out of the context of just maintenance and you're endeavoring to try to make a difference. I was born and raised in Southern California, I guess that's, hence the hippie phrasing, but I've been transplanted here long enough to just really love the city and love the community. And I'm grateful that we get to be together today. I am honored, I am surprised, and I wish I had worn my red coat to fit in with the Deltas today, because you look fine over there. And again, on behalf of all the people that just have a commitment and are like you, working together to make a difference, thank you very much. I'm very honored.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd just like to say to Pastor Perry that I'm excited that you're here. Not only are you a blessing to my two colleagues here at the Board of Aldermen, but you're a blessing to the entire city of Saint Louis. I enjoy seeing your commercials, and I just am so glad for your service and for responding to your call to be a need in this city. And so on behalf of the Sixth Ward, I just wanted to say thank you.
Any further comments? Any further comments? Thanks again, Pastor. Alderwoman from Nineteenth, would like to approach the diocese, and it's time for Delta Days. And we ask the Deltas to join us up here at the diocese, and Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution Number 11?
Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January the 13th, 1913 by 22 visionary women at Howard University. And whereas since that day, Delta members have been actively involved in almost every major social movement in the United States. Whereas the first public act performed by Delta founders involved their participation in the Historic Women Suffrage March in Washington DC during March of 1913. And whereas originally chartered as Lambda Sigma, the Saint Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta has committed to public service for over 90 years. And whereas, every Delta uses her influence for the enactment of laws to protect the unfortunate and for the repeal of those laws which deprive human beings of their privileges and rights. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta is increasingly involved in important issues at the local, state, and federal levels, in global issues, and recently received special consultative status with United Nations. And whereas, Deltas from across the nation travel to Washington DC to participate in Delta Days in the nation's capital. And whereas, on Friday, April the 29th, 2011, Deltas from throughout the Saint Louis metropolitan area will gather to celebrate the annual Delta Day at Saint Louis City Hall. Now therefore bid resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Saint Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and honor the members of the Saint Louis Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and we thank them for their tireless efforts on behalf of the city of this community. And we direct the clerk of this board to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution to the end that it may be presented to our honorees at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the 29th, day of April 2011, by Honorable Marlene E. Davis, Alderwoman Nineteenth Ward, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In recognizing the Deltas, there's not enough time today for me to share with you everything that they do, not only in this locale, but around the world. This is a group of women who've been organized for almost 100 years now, and what they have accomplished is above and beyond anything that we could understand. First of all, it's not just about a gathering for ladies to chat and have tea. They represent every facet of the professional world. Some of them have taken their retirement time and become what I consider to be experts at volunteerism, mentoring, and most especially how to raise money for causes. When I think about the enrichment that they've brought to this community, it is unreal, because I've met most of them in other arenas and worked with them, so I know how powerful they can be. I wanna take a moment to recognize one of those women that we recently lost, and that's Mary Christmas. Margaret, you know, I called her Mary, but her name is Margaret. But Margaret is just one of those ladies that we've lost out of our community because her church was in the Nineteenth Ward at Central Baptist. She was one of the first people who mentored me when I was on the school board in Saint Louis. She pulled me to the side and told me a few things I needed to know and understand. And she watched me, and she talked to me, and she shared many things with me. She did the same thing with many young people, and she was a treasurer. And when I sat there and I watched how you gave her your recognition and the homecoming, it was quite incredible, quite incredible. So I say to you, thank you again for everything that you have done. There are so many people in this community and outside of this community that have benefited from what you do. So Delta Day is important to us, to have you stand here before this illustrious board, and we give presentation to you. I also wanna say thank you to the President of the Board, because the Honorable Louis Reed has extended himself today to make sure that your welcome is great, and the resolution and everything is absolutely wonderful. So on behalf of this Board of Aldermen, this chamber and body, here you are, okay. I'd like to present to you this beautiful plaque for you to hang in your home, and it says, "In honor of the sisterhood, scholarship, and service that you provide, we salute the Saint Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. The Board of Aldermen recognizes the enormous impact that the Deltas' programs and services have on our quality of life in Saint Louis City. Your service is an example to strive for. Presented this day, April 29th, 2011, by President of the Saint Louis City Board of Aldermen, Louis E. Reed." Thank you so very much. On behalf of the, thank you. On behalf of the 250 members of the Saint Louis Alumni Chapter, we thank you so very much for this honor. We will continue to be a significant impact in our community. Thank you so very, very much.
You're more than welcome. And I wanted to, one of the things that I also wanted to do was to make sure that you understood that a lot of times when people talk about, you know, how you have that banter go back and forth about the Deltas, the AKAs, the Sigma, whatever, it's not like that in this town. You all work honestly on behalf of this community, and whatever else goes on behind the scenes, we never see it, and I love it, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I wanna make sure that you take your resolution and have an opportunity to put that with the others that you have received in the past, and know that we love you, okay?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd like to, while the Deltas are lining up, I'd like to also just send out my thanks and congratulations for a job well done. The Deltas are a force to be reckoned with within our city, but also across this nation. They get involved in the grassroots efforts, everything from healthcare to education, you know, all aspects of the community, and I can't thank them enough for the job that they do. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, would like to approach Alderwoman from the fourteenth, excuse me.
Yes, you asked for further discussion. I would like to recognize the Deltas also. They have, in my tenure, past tenure as with the Saint Louis Public Schools, brought to the table many talented people and served in the capacity as teachers, many of the members of Delta kept the Deltas. I would like to recognize Dr. Doris Graham as a past colleague and friend of mine. I was surprised to see her here today. Please give her a round of applause. She's served as a school board member and a lifelong educator, and one of the reading is Fundamental Ritz Sisters in her past career. Good morning, Doris.
Yes, Madam Clerk, could you read the resolution, please?
Whereas we have been apprised, soon June Bosley Dabney Gray will celebrate her glorious 76th birthday. Whereas June Bosley Dabney Gray is a Commissioner for the 22nd Judicial Circuit Court of Missouri, where she is responsible for interviewing candidates for potential judgeship vacancies in Saint Louis City. She is a retired school teacher and worked as a clerk too for the Adult Abuse Child Abuse Small Claims Department in the Civil Courts Building. And whereas June has been a politician, a professional opera singer, winner of the Metropolitan Opera Auditions, winner of the Ted Mack Original Amateur Hour, national TV, and winner of many other competitions. She is listed in the Who's Who in Music Directory, Cambridge, England, Who's Who of American Women, Who's Who in Society, Who's Who among America's Teachers, Outstanding Young Women of America, Who's Who in Black Saint Louis, and Cambridge, Who's Who 2010-2011 Edition. Whereas June has a Master's Degree in Education from the National Lewis University in Chicago, Illinois, and a Bachelor's Degree in Music Education from Lincoln University in Jefferson City. And whereas she is in Sumner High School's Hall of Fame. And whereas she introduced a bill in Missouri with the aid of Senator Franklin Payne that allows pregnant women to work up to their due date if desired. She also introduced a bill with the help of Senator Jed Banks that prevented utility companies of Missouri from turning off a person's gas and lights if they have sick children or invalids living in their home. And whereas she is presently a member of many neighborhood organizations, SPUD, Skinkerp Page, Union, and Delmore, Jack Stradiger CUNA, Concerned Citizens United Neighborhood Association, Dorothy Schnee Chairman, Ivory Perry Park Association, Archilla Buford Sponsor, and Seventh District Police Meetings. And whereas her memberships include Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Saint Louis Alumni Chapter, Board Member of the Saint Louis Bible Way Church Incorporated, Birthday Committee Chairman of Saint Louis Bible Way Church Cameo Clubs of Saint Louis, Missouri, designated to entertain senior citizens and shut-ins, Sumner High School Alumni Chapter, Sumner High School Alumni Class of 1952, Alumni Volunteer at Sumner High School for the Choir Club, Maple Acres Vernon Maple Association, and Local 420 Union for Teachers. Now therefore bid resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Saint Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate June Bosley Dabney Gray on the occasion of her 76th birthday, and we wish her continued peace, good health, and happiness. And we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the 29th, day of April 2011, by Honorable Frank Williamson, Alderman Twenty-Sixth Ward, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen, Alderman Trupe, Flowers, Bosley, Moore, Griffin, Triplet, Wessels, Howard, Florida, Kennedy, Schmidt, Boyd, Vacaro, Cohn, Carter, and Cruzen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning. It's my pleasure to present this resolution to Ms. Gray. That's an excellent resume that you have, Ms. Gray. And she's lived in Twenty-Sixth Ward approximately 12 years. She's been very helpful in the community. She attends a lot of our community meetings, giving out excellent advice to some of the seniors, just as well as to youth. She's very active, and a lot of the events that we have in Twenty-Sixth Ward, where we have our back-to-school events, Christmas parties, several Neighborhood Days in the park, and she's a great inspiration of giving us good advice and helping our community become a safe one. And I really appreciate the hard work that you have done in the past, and you continue to do so. Also, she comes from a very strong political Also, she comes from a very strong political family background. You know, she has a nephew that was the former Mayor of the City of St. Louis, Freeman Bosley, Jr., and also our esteemed colleague Freeman Senior of the 3rd Ward Alderman is her brother. So I just want to thank you, June, and this is a way that our community noticed you, and we're giving back to you by giving you this resolution for all the great work that you do, and we just want that to do, to not go unnoticed. So thank you for all the work that you do, and we appreciate your help. Thank you.
God bless all of you, and I just thank you so much. I'm humbled today, and I'm so excited seeing my sorrows over there, my sisters, and Frank is such a wonderful Alderman. He is, he is. I couldn't ask for a better Alderman. And I just want to thank my family. If my family members would stand up right quickly, and my friends, my aunt and uncle, my sisters, cousins, will you stand up, please, right quickly? My sister Tyler is not quite a politician, but she is on the Treasurer's Board. They can't operate without her, so I am so excited. I just want to thank you so much, so very, very much.
I'd also just think, it's hard to believe that she's 76. Give her another round of applause, and she looks... That's a young, that's a young 76. Alderman from the 4th, you have a resolution? Courtesy Resolution? Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution Number 16?
Whereas Etta Jeanette Key is the daughter of Doris Key and Daniel Lee, and the mother of two children, Ncosi Jahim Key and Amani Jule Key. And whereas Etta Key was born and raised in St. Louis and educated in St. Louis Public Schools. She graduated from Sumner High School in 1987 before continuing her education at Lincoln University to earn a Bachelor of Science, Science Degree in Criminal Justice in 1993, and a Master of Arts Degree in Sociology in 1994. Whereas in 1994 and '95, Etta Key taught life skills and job readiness skills to those in the St. Louis area who were underprepared for gainful employment. And whereas Etta Key was the personal instructor for more than 200 GED graduates in the past 10 years, and she touched the lives of countless others through her teaching efforts in the GED program. And whereas Etta Key was a family literacy instructor for the Toyota families and schools and project even start programs prior to becoming the master teacher for the Adult Learning Center, which is headquarters for the GED program in the City of St. Louis. Whereas Etta Key was the coordinator of the GED online program for the City of St. Louis prior to her joining the Demetrius Johnson Charitable Foundation. And whereas, as an adult education teacher since 1999, Etta Key joined the Demetrius Johnson Charitable Foundation in August 2010. Now therefore, it being resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to recognize the many accomplishments of Etta Jeanette Key, and we wish her continued success, achievement, and accomplishment. And we further direct the Clerk of this Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end of it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the 29th day of April 2011 by Honorable Samuel L. Moore, Alderman 4th Ward.
Good morning. Want to thank the President Reed. They have put short pants on me since I took up so much time last week. I only have two minutes, so we're going to let Marlene handle it this week. We have a young lady here by the name of Etta Key, and Etta Key is a perfect example of giving back to the community. A young lady that was born and raised in the community, went out, got her education, and came back and bought a new home in the 4th Ward, and she's just a 4th Ward, true 4th Ward citizen. And I cannot say enough to Etta about coming back and giving to the community like she gives all the time, always trying to one-on-one and tutor individuals who need help in that community. So with that, I say, Etta, we appreciate you from the Board of Aldermen and from the City of St. Louis. We totally appreciate what you're doing in this community. Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'd like to say thank you for presenting me with this award, and also, this means a lot to me. I received the resolution from the Missouri House of Representatives, but not to say that I don't appreciate it, of course, I love it, but it just means so much more receiving one from the City of St. Louis, which is where I was born and raised. And also, I'd like to say I love my job. I love helping students that some of, you know, some of my colleagues have given up on. So they come to me, I help them, and I encourage them to continue their education. And these are some of my students and tutors and volunteers that work with me. So thank you all for coming, and again, this means so much to me. And I also want to thank Mr. Ward. I've known him, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore.
I am Mr. Ward.
I've known him for years, and he always encouraged me to go to school. In fact, one time I came home on the weekend, and I didn't have a way back to school, so I was like, just running around confused as to how I was going to get back to school. So I told Sam, well, I don't know how I'm going to get back to school, so he drove me back to Jefferson City and made sure, you know, I got back to school. So when he became Alderman, he did, he's doing so much for the 4th Ward. When I decided to buy a home, since, again, I was born and raised in a Veal area, that was my first option, like, I'm going back home, because I know with Mr. Moore being Alderman, I'm safe, and he's going to, you know, do his best to better the community. So I just want to say thank you so much. This means so much to me.
While they're lining up real quick, I'd like to also thank Etta for her work with some of our young folks, giving them another opportunity to go out and get their education. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution. Counting all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose motion carried. That will return our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest. Alderman from the 23rd. My special guests, from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, David Holmes and Michael Loughlin, and from the Realtors, Celeste Reader. All the one from the 14th.
I would like to introduce as my special guests Anthony Lancia and Steve Spreck from the Communication Workers of America.
Alderman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, they moved the mic on me. As my honored guest, I'd like to have State Representative and Committee Man Chris Carter, and also, I want to recognize the Commissioner of Health, Melvin Moore, with the Deltas.
Also, Tom Villa. This is his first meeting back with us today. Everybody give Tom a round of applause. Welcome back, Tom, if you can join us. I know we're all looking forward to serving with you. You served well for a number of years. You did a lot of stuff at the State House and things, so we're going to be leaning on you for some of the things we'd like to see in Jeff City also, but thanks again for agreeing to come back and serve St. Louis one more time. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce as my special guests, State Representative Jacob Hummel, who represents the 12th Ward, I believe the 11th Ward, and the 13th Ward.
All the one from the 2nd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to recognize as my honored guest, Antoinette Cousins, the Executive Director of Riverview West Florissant.
All the one from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guests today, as almost every week, Ronnie Hour, and also, Jake Hummel has one precinct in the 9th Ward, too.
All right, that's good. Any further introductions? Any further induction? All the one from 10 wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we gather here on the 29th day of April. I'm sure you're all tired from waking up to watch the royal wedding this morning, but I do have a piece of St. Louis royalty with myself, the Lord of Leona Avenue, Mr. Fred Stefan.
With dispensary line item five, a report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A and B of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
With dispensary line items seven through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Number Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and President Reed, in ordinance pertaining to ward boundaries for the city, repealing ordinance 62476, establishing new ward boundaries with an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Three, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Bates Street at Leona Street, causing it to be a three-way stop intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Four, sponsored by Alderwoman Griffin, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell the corporation's 1520 Market Street leasehold revenue bonds containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Griffin and President Reed, in ordinance to provide further borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for a deposit in its general revenue fund for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2011, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Six, sponsored by Alderwoman Griffin, in ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any packaged liquor license for any non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 55th Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Seven, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commission to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the 6,500 block of Scanlon as Francis R. Slay Way. Board Bill Number Eight, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, in ordinance amending ordinance 65233, authorizing the designation of honorary street names within the city, the basis for recognition, requiring payment for the cost and installation of honorary signs, and limiting the number of board bills authorizing the designation of honorary street names. Board Bill Number Nine, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Dover Street at Coronado, causing it to be a four-way stop intersection containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Two, sponsored by Alderman Trup, Board Bill Number Ten, sponsored by Alderman Trup and Alderman Boyd, in ordinance which amends ordinance 68536, Section Seven and Section Nine of the Excise Code to clarify that premises where motor vehicle service stations exist are limited to 5% package licenses and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Eleven, sponsored by Alderwoman Griffin, in ordinance amending ordinance 67941 by modifying the terms of a 10-year real estate tax abatement for 1208 Hebert and in the 1204 through 08, 1205 and 1219 Hebert redevelopment area. Board Bill Number Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Carter, in ordinance authorizing and directing the fire chief to enter into and execute a grant agreement with Federal Emergency Management Agency to fund a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response projects upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportement, and to expend funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Griffin, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate above-surface and subsurface rights for travel on a portion of Second Street north of Brooklyn adjoining city blocks 238, 239, 249, and 250 South, the North-South Alley and City Block 249 bounded by Brooklyn, Second, Mound, and Broadway, a portion of Eighth beginning 102 feet north of Howard to a point adjoining city blocks 620, 653, 654, and 655. A portion of Howard beginning 60 feet west of Eighth extending to Interstate Highway 70 right-of-way and adjoining city blocks 609 and 653.5. Ninth Street from Brooklyn southwardly to Interstate Highway 70 right-of-way and adjoining city blocks 620, 650, and 653. Tenth from Howard northwardly to a point and adjoining city blocks 649 and 650.7. North-South Alley and City Block 649 and bounded by Interstate Highway 70, Tenth, Howard, and Eleventh. Howard from Tenth to Eleventh and adjoining city blocks 611 and 649. Eleventh from Melanphy to Cass and adjoining city blocks 601 and 602. Board Bill Number Fourteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, in ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 2616 California containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Fifteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2619 South Compton containing a severability clause. Board Bill Sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, in ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 6408 Arthur containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 7059 Mardel containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Eighteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Griffin, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2320 through 48 Dodier containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4168 West Pine containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for North Grand West Florissant Grove and Carter containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-One, sponsored by Alderwoman Kennedy, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4312 Washington containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance amending ordinance 67743 by modifying the terms of five-year real estate tax abatement for 3805 Wyoming. Board Bill Twenty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3218 through 20 Cherokee containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-Four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2801 through 03 Missouri containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4325 Ashland containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3434 Humphrey containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4059 Councilman containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty-Eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver a lease termination agreement between the city and the Port Authority, and President Riverview Casino, Missouri approving a form of such lease termination agreement, authorizing the execution of a document necessary to comply with the intent of this ordinance containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Twenty-Nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Kennedy, in ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any packaged liquor license for any non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 18th Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Cruzen, in ordinance relating to excess payments designated by any person, firm, or corporation on... payments designated by any person, firm or corporation on any water bill, personal property tax bill, real estate tax bill or other bill in the city which is designated by ordinance for a city asset. Services provided for by the city are for a nonprofit entity, minimum amount required annually for non-private agencies, maximum number of non-profit agencies and disposition of designated excess payments. Board Bill Thirty One, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Anetta at the South Curb Line of Hallsberry Road containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty Two, sponsored by Alderman Cruisin and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from a single-family dwelling district to the H-area commercial district in City Block 3859 of property at 4641 through 49 Maryland containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty Three, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration a sum of $1 and other good and valuable consideration, a permanent irrevocable easement which shall give, grant and extend and confer onto Leclerc Gas Company in City Block 2034 containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Thirty Four, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the mayor to make application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development pursuant to Section 108 of Title I of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974 as amended to refinance the city's existing Section 108 loan pertaining to Downtown Convention Center Hotel with a new loan containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill Number Thirty Five, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the mayor to make application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development pursuant to Section 108 of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended to refinance the city's existing Section 108 loan pertaining to Darce Webby Hope 6 revitalization plan with a new loan containing an emergency and severability clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Legislation Committee, Board Bill Two, to Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill Twenty Eight, to Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills Four, Five, Thirty and Thirty Three, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills Six, Ten, Twelve and Twenty Nine, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills Eleven, Twenty, Thirty Two, Thirty Four and Thirty Five, to the Streets Committee, Board Bills Three, Seven, Eight, Nine, Thirteen and Thirty One, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty One, Twenty Two, Twenty Three, Twenty Four, Twenty Five, Twenty Six and Twenty Seven. That's the extent of reference to committees.
With dispensal line items thirteen through nineteen, first reading, first reading
Resolution Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, the Board of Aldermen directs the Public Safety Committee to convene hearings for purpose of examining and reviewing the city's emergency response plan for the city as planned by CIMA.
Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on the first reading, resolution number fourteen.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I would move for adoption of resolution fourteen.
Would you like to ask for unanimous consent?
Unanimous consent, partners.
Here ain't no objection, Alderman, please proceed.
I move for adoption of resolution fourteen.
All right, move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. First, I'd like to add the Chairman of the Public Safety, Alderman Carter's name as a co-sponsor on the resolution. The resolution simply asks the Public Safety Committee or directs the Public Safety Committee to hold a series of hearings to review the city's emergency response plan and recovery plan. As we know, over these past months, we've received a number of storms, high winds and damage throughout the city. On New Year's Eve, a tornado cut across a portion of the city of St. Louis into north St. Louis and left quite a bit of devastation in its wake. The city's emergency response plan is essential to, one, the survival of the city in these kinds of incidents. This resolution simply asks the Public Safety Committee to review that plan as a part of its natural and normal function as the Public Safety Committee. There is an overall disaster and emergency plan that was created by the city's, by the city's emergency management office. And so, this resolution would simply have the Board of Aldermen review that and make any recommendations or alterations for recommendations to that office and then report back to the Board of Aldermen if they deem necessary by Friday, July 15th. With that, I will renew my motion.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number fourteen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
With dispensal line item twenty-two miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
No meetings until Friday. Full board meeting 10:00 AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the fifth.
Yes, I wanted to make an announcement that we're gonna have a Ways and Means meeting Tuesday at 9:00 AM.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. Ald, thank you, President Reed. Have a special guest today I'd like to announce and her name is Achilla Buford. She is the Executive Director of the Union Community Ministry and just glad that she's here. She does an excellent job during the summer concert with the 26th Ward in Ivan Prairie Park. Thanks a lot, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We also will be releasing the committee list a little bit later today, so your, your secretaries will be getting in touch with you, with, with your list. You can have them email it to you, you can have them email the entire list or just the committees that, that you've been assigned to be on. And, you know, that'll become from my office through Tom Shepherd a little bit later today, probably in the next couple hours. Alderman from the second.
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement that May the 14th, we're having the second and 27th Ward jointly is having a family conference at Northwest High School. It'll be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and we're going, we want our constituents to come out and hear information as far as jobs, as far as the programs, what they can do to step up to the plate to make their community better. We're gonna have some TV giveaways, we're gonna have a computer giveaway and it's just gonna be a wealth of information. This is sponsored by Riverview West Florissant Development Corporation, so look in your mail and we'll continue to make these announcements every Friday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just would like to remind my constituents that Alderman Villa and I will be at Foodland from 8:30 to 9:30 next Friday morning, just as Alderman Villa and I have been there since 1998. You're welcome to join us.
All right, all right. Any further, Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to let people know that this evening at Bishop DeBerg High School, which is located at Eichelberger in Hampton, is the Relay for Life Race, which helps benefit all people who have been affected by cancer, which I think most people at this time in their lives probably have. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone and particularly my constituents that on Sunday, May 1st, there will be a informational session about the survivors of the atrocities from Benka in Bosnia. It's at 12:30 at the Church at Bevo, 5035 Graboy. Also, I will be available to my constituents on Thursday, 4:30 PM at Starbucks on South Kings Highway in Shipewall. Thank you.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the eighth ward due to necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Twenty-fourth, no.
Excuse me. Yeah, well, they look alike. I'm sorry. I'd like to amend that motion to, to excuse the Alderman from the third ward.
All right, move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 AM, May 6th.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. We stand adjourned.